Morning and welcome to the council committee, the whole meeting. January 23rd. I'm going to call this meeting to order. What did I say, 23rd, 31st? There you go, January 31st. Don't know where that came from. Don't even like the 23rd, I don't know why. I'm a week behind, I guess. Eight days behind. Anyways, moving on, the council committee, the whole for January 23rd, call this meeting to order. My agenda's not loading, so we'll get started. Today's, the intent of today's meeting is to allow administration to update council as requested by council previously, and update on the rapid vaccination policy, the COVID vaccination policy as indicated in our package. And so I see Ms. Lee on camera. I'll turn it over to Ms. Lee unless there's someone else that wants to jump in first. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead. Ms. Lee, welcome to the meeting and feel free to go ahead and then I'll open it up to council for questions.
Good morning and thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm actually going to turn the camera over to Sheldon D'Souza to start off the presentation and I will, I will present on the aggregate data.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. D'Souza, welcome. Mr. D'Souza, sorry, you're just muted.
Hello, good morning, everyone. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with council today about our vaccination and rapid testing policy. My name is Sheldon D'Souza and I am the Human Resource Manager for the City of Grand Prairie. Joining me today is our Health and Safety Consultant from the city and we will be presenting a very quick check-in with council. So I'd like to emphasize that our COVID-19 vaccination and rapid testing policy is a temporary measure for the pandemic and the organization is constantly evaluating the need for a policy. We are hopeful that in the future there will, there will not be a need for a policy, however, we must ensure that we are evaluating the proper metrics in recommending this option. We will be evaluating all of the relevant metrics in order to make sure that we have the most important information and recommendation to council. We understand that there are very, there are many different opinions on this complex topic and HR and Health and Safety are listening carefully to different opinions and we believe that we have created a policy that has consideration for both sides. When creating our policy, we took the best practices from other policies and advice from government and health officials. As time and case law on this topic has evolved, our policy has aged well. We understand that rapid testing options are a better solution than mandatory vaccinations and many organizations are switching over to rapid testing options. We are constantly evaluating the changes in our municipal comparators. Our ideology on this policy is to maintain a reasonable, adaptable and flexible policy. This will allow us to make the changes we need on the policy to adapt processes and maintain flexibility. For example, if council chooses to change or get rid of the policy, we can do it in a short timeframe. This will make it easy for the organization and council to make any changes in our policy and procedure in the future. The ability to give employees options to rapid test at the employer's cost makes our policy reasonable. Now I will pass it over to Kristi Lee, who is our Health and Safety Consultant, who will talk about the aggregate data for rapid testing results.
Thank you, Sheldon, and thank you for having us here today. The aggregate data starts from our testing date, which was effective on January 17th, 2022. We have 107 employees taking part in the rapid testing program. 83 employees have tested at least one time since January, January 17th. We have 212 rapid test kits that have been used, which leaves us with our balance of 13 and 1,388 tests available for testing. And through this, through our asymptomatic testing, we were also able to identify six COVID positive results. Our testing hours are through HSE integrated. We do a Monday to, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday testing from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We feel that this testing is adequate for the amount of staff that we have in the organization with our shift work. In February, we will be readjusting our testing schedule to be down from five days a week to four days a week. Thank you.
All right. So at our last council meeting, our mayor asked us a really great question around when this policy might end. This question was very hard to answer at the time, obviously because of the Delta variant and the problems and challenges that were presented with the Delta variant. However, administration has formalized some metrics for you on how we will evaluate the end of a policy. We have also created timelines for more frequent check-ins with council and our corporate leadership teams. So we start here with January 17th, 2022, and that was our start of our vaccination and rapid testing program. On this day, employees were required to show their proof of vaccination or undertake rapid testing. If employees did not comply with the policy, we have put them on a leave of absence. January 31st, which is today, we just finished an in-camera legal Q and A with council to address any questions that, that they may have in respect to our legal opinions. And as I speak, we are presenting the council policy update. February 17th, which is just over two weeks away, we will be reviewing our policy with our corporate leadership team and presenting an update on the direction from our government, health officials, municipal comparators, legal opinions, R E P program status and wastewater data. These are just some of the metrics that we're going to utilize in determining our next steps for the policies. So in determining the best practices and the next steps moving forward, this is just some of the information that we felt would be vital to understand so that council can make the best decision. So for example, if the government decides to eliminate the R E P program or pull back restrictions like eliminating the masking bylaw, this would be a good indication of us making changes or eliminating a policy. We are constantly working with the best lawyers in assessing new case law, as you could see in our in-camera meeting. Our recommendation for council is to utilize our council check-ins so that we can present the best possible information for council to make decisions on. No one can predict the future of COVID-19 and there may be new variants that change the pictures moving forward. However, we can assist council by providing the best resources and relevant information for council to make the best decisions. These things take time to evolve and change and the analysis from HR and Health and Safety will greatly help you in your decision-making abilities. The next day of March 7th is when we will present relevant data on the metrics we just talked about to council. We plan on moving more frequent, we plan on a meeting with council more frequently, as mentioned, to, to address the ever-changing challenges of COVID-19. March 24th, we will do the same and follow some of the metrics that we have in place and share it with, with CLT and then our corporate leadership team and then with council on April 4th. April 4th, council will also decide if we want to extend the employer pay testing and we will gather all the relevant information and make the appropriate recommendations for council along the way. In conclusion, I'd like to emphasize that our approach is and will continually be to check in with council and our corporate leadership team as much as we possibly can. We respect all sides of the argument and appreciate the healthy debate with council and with our employees. It helps us refine and improve our processes. We appreciate all the discussions amongst council and employees and we strive to find a middle ground on the most controversial topic in the world right now. And remember, we are two weeks into this program today, so it's very new. Utilizing the dates presented will give council time and more relevant data to make decisions on our policy. Thanks for your time and we eagerly await your questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. D'Souza, Ms. Lee. And now we'll open it up for questions. Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I have two questions. One is, one of the options we have are for people who refuse testing or vaccines to take unpaid leave of absence. Is there anyone who is in that position? Not names, but numbers.
Mr. D'Souza?
Through the mayor, we currently have two people on a leave of absence.
Okay, and my second question is, you mentioned that one of the metrics you're using is wastewater data. Are we collecting that here or are we relying on larger centers and their data?
Mr. D'Souza?
Through the, through the chair, we are collecting it here, but I think Kristi might have had some, some more information.
Ms. Lee?
Through the mayor, we do collect the data based on the 14 municipalities who are actively monitoring the wastewater. We get that information through the province and that information is also shared through our G-Prep Coordinator at the City of Grand Prairie.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lee, I'm not 100% clear. Are you saying that the, one of the 14 municipalities is Grand Prairie?
Through the chair, yes, sorry. One of our municipalities out of the 14 is the City of Grand Prairie.
Mr. Counselor Berg?
Hi, thank you, Mayor Clayton. The one question that I have is you've got two specific dates flagged in there. I just want to reassure people that February 17th, March 7th, should the provincial government adjust certain mandates on February 28th, we have the flexibility to meet and mirror what those provincial guidelines would newly reflect.
Mr. D'Souza?
Through the chair, yes, absolutely. These are dates that we have scheduled for council. However, if there are drastic changes in any of the metrics that we have identified, we will be meeting with council as soon as possible.
Wonderful, thank you.
Perfect. Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank you. A concern I've had with asking employees to go to location is employees that rely on, rely on public transit or otherwise don't get around with a private vehicle. Has that been a challenge that's been identified to the city, any employees have been having?
Mr. D'Souza?
Yes, through the chair, we have tried to accommodate employees as much as we can. We have a bunch of options as well, including HSE on-site, if that is the case. So we, we are trying to accommodate employees as much as we can through rapid testing. And Kristi, do you have anything else to add to that?
Through the chair and thank you, Sheldon. We have not today had any employees request any additional accommodation and if we had had that, we would have, we would have definitely rectified that.
Excellent, thank you.
All right. So I don't see anybody else in the queue with questions. I will thank you for your time today. And now if council had any business arising, now would be an appropriate time for that. And if none, then I would look for this CCW to be adjourned. Counselor Thiessen?
Sure, I might as well be here and try to get some business done, so I'll make a motion. And I'm not sure how this one's going to go, but I do believe that this policy was put into place to protect the health and safety of our employees and I truly believe in protecting the health and safety of our employees very much. So what the evidence is growingly showing us is that vaccinated people can give COVID, get COVID and be hospitalized with COVID. Those numbers are growing every single day. So if an employee can give, get and go to hospital with COVID, I think we should be doing everything in our power as employers to protect as many people as possible. So I guess my motion would be, is that I would move that we, we apply a random testing of up to 180 employees per week and go from there. Thank you.
All right. So to confirm, Counselor Thiessen's comment for discussion or debate is to randomly test 180 city employees weekly. 180, yep, that's 100, sorry, not 180, 100 employees random tested weekly. All right, I have a full queue, so Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Prior to this, this meeting, we had a Q and A and a presentation from a legal representative, which stated, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you cannot ask the vaccinated to test unless it's a voluntary process. So maybe as far as legal is concerned, health and health guidelines, maybe we're a little bit behind in regards to how quick Omicron and so forth is moving ahead, but at this point, I can't support, sorry, this because I think we, we don't have a choice but to follow our provincial and federal guidelines. So until they catch up, you know, then we can do something, but at this point in time, after our presentation, through legal advice, I don't, I don't think we can.
Counselor Larners?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. As much as I appreciate the spirit of your question and, and the fact that the, the people that are vaccinated are probably giving the unvaccinated the illness probably more so than the other way around because they're tested. Our unvaccinated aren't, aren't positive. The only way they're getting it maybe is from the people that they're working with. But the goal, I think, of this process to me is eventually to try and get something that, so we're doing less testing, not more testing. And I agree with Counselor Bosch that this, you know, some liability in terms of voluntary. So as much as I'd like to support it, I, I think I won't this time.
Ms. Counselor Larners, Counselor Berg?
Yeah, again, legally, I think we just received the advice that we can't. I do feel it's a worthy discussion to have, that vaccinated employees have access to testing, should they voluntarily want it, not on a 72-hour basis, but should they, should they want it. There apparently aren't any tests available and if the city has some, again, I see this more as more as, rather than a policy, a health and medical benefit. Again, I'm not necessarily proposing it, but I think it's worthy of a conversation. But certainly, again, I don't think that we can do the rapid testing as, as the motion just was put forward.
Just to interject on your comments there, Counselor Berg, I think the comment is more that currently, based on the allocated money for COVID testing and implementation of that testing to our unvaccinated staff force, testing vaccinated wouldn't fit. If there was an interest from council to revisit the amount allocated or to amend the policy for an opportunity for vaccinated to be tested, I think that's a, that is absolutely within your right to explore that and discuss, put forward a motion on that. But you are correct in the sense that the current amount allocated does not cover vaccinated. Okay. Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank you. Just before I make comments, I'm hoping to just get some clarity from Counselor Thiessen, because I don't know if his motion was specific, as though, hope for this, that there would be 100 randomly selected employees who would get told, "You must get tested to work," or would it be that this would be a voluntary thing that unvaccinated employees could sign up to participate in?
Counselor Thiessen, just some clarification on your motion, please.
Yes, I really, I really appreciate Counselor Bressi's question, because in, in my opinion, I think we should have testing open for all staff, you know, if they feel like they got a slight sniffle or cough, "Well, maybe I should go down to HSE today and, and get a test." I know that's currently provided by my employer. I, I think it could really go either way, and I'm open to definite, definite friendly amendments. The 100, the 100, I guess I could have said up to, like I said before, that's just to ensure that we have a level of safety. And looking at the presentation that we had, we spent about $650 a day on the testing sites. It's five days now, going down to four. We have 1,600 tests. So the way things are changing and moving right now, I'm not entirely sure that we're going to be mandating anything in a month and a half or two. And I do think that that fits within our budget that we've already allocated for. And if people want to get a test with the city, they're more than, I think they should be more than able to go get a test. I know when I went and got a test, I didn't have to fill out a form and say, "Hey, I signed up for this program." I just said, "I'm a city employee," and they went to work. And I don't know if they captured my data. So I do believe that the option should be there for our vaccinated employees as well. My big concern on this, and the reason why I put forward this motion for discussion, is, is that I think this policy was designed to ensure safety of our employees during this time of COVID. And with new understandings, I think we should be nimble and quick and fluid in how we address this and keep our employees safe. So I hope that clarifies your question, Counselor Bressi. I might have convoluted it a bit, but that's, that's my response.
Counselor Bressi?
Yeah, and thank you, you kind of answered it, but I'll, I'll tell you right now that I, and I'll speak to why in a minute, in a minute, but right now, as the motion stands, you definitely don't have my support. If you did take a friendly amendment to make it clear that it was a voluntary thing that employees could participate in, then, then you, then you might get my support. And so I'm wondering if you'd be open to a voluntary amendment, or a friendly amendment to make it clear that it's voluntary?
Counselor Thiessen?
First request to speak. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Counselor Bressi. I'm totally open to that. Again, just to point to it, the premise of this policy is for safety and health of our employees. And if we can give all of our employees an opportunity to ensure that they're, they're safe, they're healthy, and they're being safe with their other employees, and they have that testing option available to them, I'm totally game. So if you want to make it a voluntary of up to 100 tests per week for staff, then I'm open to that amendment.
Counselor Bressi?
Yeah, and then ju, just to speak to this, it's a, I really do believe that our primary goal, number one, needs to, needs to be safety in our workplace, and after that, our number one goal needs to protect the organization from legal liability. And for me, when we're looking at both the medical side and the legal side, we're not the experts. I think we absolutely need to be listening to the ex, to the experts in the field. And when it comes to that medical side, I was reading the Alberta Scientific Advisory Group on COVID's paper today, and something that it says is, "COVID-19 vaccine studies show that vaccinated people are well protected from infection. They're 20 times less likely to get COVID illness if they do get infected. Vaccinated people have much less virus in their system for shorter time periods, so they are much less likely to be hospitalized or died, or die." And so I think there is, the experts are saying that even though vaccinated folks can catch and transmit the virus, my understanding of what the medical experts are saying is that there is less risk, less risk there. So for, for me to, it makes sense to have a different policy for the two. But also, when I look at our legal advice, it's the legal advice that, as my understanding is, follow the, all the lead of those experts. And that's why I couldn't support this one. It was a mandatory thing, so my understanding is our legal liability doesn't give us cover if it's a mandatory thing. But if it's a voluntary thing, then I actually do, I, I do support that to some extent. I think it, I think it makes sense. I think it makes sense to protect people in our workplace. I also think it makes sense from a peace of mind. I know I've had, I've had friends and I've had colleagues and I've had people that work at the city go, "I don't know if I quite feel safe about going to work, because I've had this close contact, and I don't have to quarantine, and I'm following the law, but I still don't know if I feel right." And to give them the peace of mind of access to tests, I think, would be good. So for me, I really am just evaluating what's the cost of this and what's the likelihood for us to have to actually pay for, pay for those tests. And I think the cost is probably worth it, but that's what I'm mulling through as we're getting towards this vote right now.
Counselor Blackmore?
I'm finding the motion quite confusing at this point in time, because I'm not sure where we're at with it, and I don't know if, if we have it written.
Sorry, Counselor Blackmore, if you can't see, if you click on item 2.1 in your escribe, it will pop up.
I'm talking about the intent of the motion, not necessarily the wording of the motion. Counselor Thiessen has said, in his motion, he's mentioned the word "random testing," which, you know, if you, if your intent is for people to go get tested if they think they may be not feeling well, or if they're just plain curious, that is entirely different than saying "random testing" or using words that would indicate some kind of expectation that we're going to do 100, have 100 people tested a week. I'm, I feel that there's a conflict inside the motion between what you're saying and what your intent is, and I'm unclear, so I need that clarified. But I also have to say, it's important to understand that the baseline data may or may not be indicative of what's really happening out there. And I'm going to give you an example. Right now, you know, we hear that so many people with vaccines are in hospital and so many people without vaccines, and it sounds like the numbers are tipping towards the vaccinated. However, we have to keep in mind that 80% roughly of people are vaccinated. So this data is actually from last Thursday, I think, but it says that if you go, if you look at numbers per 100,000 in the last 120 days in Alberta, 598 per 100,000 unvaccinated were hospitalized versus 81 per 100,000 of vaccinated. So it's pretty clear that vaccinations are still your major line of support. And whether or not I support Counselor Thiessen's motion depends on whether or not he rewords it, or, because right now, you've said, "I'll be open to this change, open to that change," but it seems pretty unclear to me what your motion currently is.
Okay, so Counselor Thiessen, I'll leave that clarification for your close. The motion is in the escribe for counselors to read. I'm just going to continue through the queue with the questions. Counselor O'Connor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm not in support of this motion based on the legal advice and specifically to cost, and that if we had, I think it was 200 vaccinated, if we vaccinate 200 tests, it would be like 300,000 a year? Am I correct in that information? I mean, 300,000 a month.
Mr. D'Souza, can you possibly clarify that?
Yeah, absolutely. So through the chair, for three months, that's what the cost would be. And, and just to point out that I think if this motion goes through, administration would like to take some time just to cost out what that would be, because we're not insured that we would get the daily rate associated with this. We're not sure if we'll get the, the free testing, because there's restrictions on how we utilize the free testing. And if, if it was something like, i, if we didn't get any daily rate, if we were to test 100 employees at $95, because that would be the test plus the administration, that's 9,500 a week, that's 30,000 a month. If we got the daily rate and, and say we just needed to do the, the additional testing, 40, 40 tests, $40 per test, just the testing alone is 4,000 a week and 1,600, so, sorry, 16,000 a month. So we would appreciate if we could share that data for councils before they make that decision.
Just to follow up on that, I think if it's $95 a test times 100, that's 9,500 in my book, unless my math is incorrect. Is my math incorrect?
Mr. D'Souza? No, he's indicating that you are correct.
Thank you. So that's 9,500. That would be 27,000 roughly in a three-month period. So I, I just can't support this if, if, if it's a voluntary, we ask employees to, to do it. I would support a voluntary program, but it, I think there still needs to be a limit as to how many. So I won't be supporting this motion.
I just, Cao Miller had something to interject. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just to confirm the numbers, I think Mr. D'Souza said it would be 9,500 a week if we tested 100 additional staff members by consent. And then that would be, times 12 over three months, so, so it's about 120,000 for those additional 100. I think, if I can just add one additional comment, Mayor Clayton, on the motion, I think it'd be difficult for administration to, you mentioned Counselor Thiessen to go up to 100, but if we had 200 that decided they wanted to, to do the testing, then how, who do we say we're not going to pay for? Just another potential difficulty with the motion, as it is. And I know myself personally, I still have a few rapid tests at home, so if I have concerns or my wife has concerns or my daughter does, then she does the free rapid home test for peace of mind, so they can go to the workplace. So that's another option for staff. I know, I know there is, the supply is diminishing a little bit at the health unit, but it's another option. I know some people actually have purchased their own free tests. You can buy them through Amazon. It's another option for staff if they have concerns.
Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much. I will not support this motion. I feel that administration and the policies that we have in place are pretty darn good, and they meet the legal requirement, and so I'm okay with status quo, but I will not support this. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Again, with, with the motion changed from random to voluntary, that, that's one thing. For me personally, I have zero interest in paying over $100,000 to test vaccinated people who could, if they choose to do so, get a free test that is through the provincial government and being handed out for free. Maybe there's a bit of a shortage at the moment. As far as I've been watching on the news, that should be rectified hopefully soon. But to take city dollars to pay for testing that can be done at zero cost, I think would be fiscally irresponsible.
Thanks for that, Counselor Bosch. I'm just going to jump in here. I appreciate those comments, Counselor Bosch. I think that that is an extraordinary amount of money. All those tests are not easy to get. They are accessible. I think that there's many things with COVID that council has to keep in the back of their mind. In my personal opinion, we need to get more people back to work. Less people working from home is my personal opinion. I think that COVID, as we see, testing of the wastewater, I recently read, and, and could be, could have read it incorrectly, but 25 municipalities across the province are testing wastewater, and that we did already peak. So I think we're getting there to those conversations. Mr. D'Souza, I understand from your timeline that you were coming back to council at the beginning of March. I'm assuming that, that's because council isn't meeting on February 21st. However, if the CLT meeting that takes place on February 17th indicates that there's an opportunity for discussion, I would encourage CLT or the Cao to let me know. I'm happy to call a special council meeting that could be done virtually if there's discussion for consideration at that time, although there's not a scheduled council meeting. If there's information that's relevant, I'm happy to call a special council meeting to have a virtual meeting on the 21st of, of February. I, I do believe that COVID is spreading through the vaccinated. I, the vaccinated are flying, the vaccinated are going to restaurants, the vaccinated are out there. The unvaccinated aren't having the opportunity to, to be out in public as, as much as the vaccinated are. But I do have concerns. This is a significant amount of money. I'll, I'll make my decision on this motion once I allow Counselor Thiessen to close, but at this time, the way the motion is worded, I can't support it. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thank you, everyone, for your input in this, whether you agree or disagree. I'm just going to put it out there. I hope we don't go through another round of, a round of debates and discussion, but listening to what my peers around the table have said, I'm willing to amend my motion to state that committee recommend council to amend the policy and allow voluntary testing for up to 100 vaccinated city employees per week. And that's if they want to do it. And that's just for the health and safety of all. So again, I'd move that committee recommend council amend the policy to allow voluntary testing for up to 100 vaccinated city employees per week. Now, speaking to this motion, very much like Mayor Clayton, I do think that COVID is its own beast, and it's finding its ways into people, whether they're vaccinated or not vaccinated. And I do see it as going on the, the waning side with the testing and wastewater. I also note Saskatchewan just yesterday dropped all of their restrictions, and I don't know if Alberta would be too far off of that. And we can wait for that to happen now, or in a month, or two, or, or whatever. But I think what I'm trying to address here is the safety of all of our staff and give them the opportunity to test. As Counselor Bosch mentioned earlier, rapid tests are hard to come by right now, and we're waiting on a shipment from the feds to come in for personal use and consumption. If this is one small thing that we can do for our city employees, I think with the tests that we have on hand, it should cover us for the next four to six weeks for sure without any increased cost. And then that way, too, hopefully, we won't be sitting on rapid tests when everything goes back hopefully to normal. So saying all that, I hope you put some consideration into your vote, and I encourage you to vote with what you think is in the best interest of our organization. Thank you.
I just have a point of clarification, Counselor Thiessen, on your motion. I'm assuming this is in addition to the existing policy?
It is in addition, so we would amend it and say, if we're up to 100 city employee staff. And I heard that very clearly from Counselor O'Connor, that he, he wants it to be voluntary, and he also needed a number attached to it. So I think 100 still keeps us within the limits of the number of tests that we have currently on hand, as well as addresses any safety concerns that any of our staff may have, vaccinated or unvaccinated.
I, I have a point of order.
Sure. Counselor Blackmore?
Do you not need to include the word "vaccinated employees" in the motion?
I, I did, yeah. Yeah.
It's not on the queue, that's okay.
Okay, so my motion, once more, one more time, is that committee recommend council amend the policy to allow voluntary testing for up to 100 vaccinated city employees per week.
All right, and just another clarification for council, this, if this motion passes, it will go to the next council meeting for debate. All right, that is Counselor Thiessen's close. I will call the question. Counselor Berg votes in opposition. And it's defeated three to six. All right, with that being said, I see Counselor Bressi in the queue.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that committee direct administration to look into options to procure at-home rapid tests for city staff who are unable to procure them from the province. And just to, just to speak to this, I think that the at-home rapid test is, is a good safety measure. I know for me, I've personally been using it when, I used one this morning, because I knew I was getting together with the nine of you, and I've used it when I'm, when I know I'm going to be meeting with a resident who's got a vulnerable medical condition, and I've used them when I've gone to work sites where there's going to be lots of people. So I think they are a good tool for safety, and I don't know what everybody else's stock is. I know I've got two left, two left in my house and have been unable to get more, and I've talked to, and that's because I had to give a to, and that's because I had to give a box to a neighbor who ran out and wanted them. And I think that there are options to get them. There's, as was indicated, some folks are buying them, but I don't think all of our employees have necessarily have the fiscal means to purchase them. And there might be, and I don't know if there's opportunities for us to buy them at a rate, buy them in bulk so that we pay less than employee would. I don't know if there's options for us to get them from the government so that we can set aside some of our employees. I honestly don't know what the options are, but I'd like administration to look into those options. And kind of my hope with it is, is if administration finds a low or low cost, a very low cost or a freeway to do it, they just kind of do it. And if they found a way to do it that costs money, that they'd come back to council and bring an option for us. But I'd like them to at least look into, make sure our employees have a good stock of at-home rapid tests.
Just some clarification on your motion. So administration to bring back options for procuring these with prices to the next appropriate standing committee? What is your intent for this information?
Like I said, I was kind of, I was a little bit open-ended. On this, I'm open to friendly amendments, make it more specific, but the reason for that was because I trust our administration to do the work and take appropriate action. Like I said, maybe they find a way, and maybe they find, and the government says, sure, we'll give you a few thousand tests. And I'd hope they just do that. But maybe they find, hey, we need to spend money on this, and then I'd hope they'd come back. But I trust administration with their research to bring it to the appropriate place or to just take action. So that's why I left open-ended. But I'm open to friendly amendment if somebody wants to make it more specific and feels that we should.
Counselor Teason?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thanks for the motion, Counselor Bressi. I really appreciate it. I think it touches on similar facets of my previous motion as well. One thing that I do like about this motion, if administration comes back and they are able to procure some bulk at-home rapid antigen tests, is that these are typically less expensive for use, anywhere between $10 and $15. That's retail, so we could get them for even cheaper than that and thereby provide it. And it covers the same territory of ground that I was hoping to cover as well, so it might even be cheaper in the long run. So I appreciate this motion by Counselor Bressi, and I think it accomplishes the ends, hopefully, if we can procure and this motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I guess it's, both the motions are a bit combined in here, and so this one I can support far more because it is looking towards our provincial government or federal government to supply what is expected by our citizens. Again, I don't think that it should be on the city's coffers, especially in a voluntary program like this when you can get it for free. So my hope is that we can get it for free, and I would be in full support of our staff members, you know, volunteering to test and whether they let HR know what the results are, that's on them. But if people are willing to test through voluntary procedure, then chances are they're willing to give the data that comes behind it. So I would support this one.
Thank you for that. Counselor Blackmore?
I'm just wondering if I'm an unvaccinated person who's required to go to a certain station to test every day or every 72 hours, and my coworker beside me gets rapid free tests from the city to take at home, what are our grounds for continuing to insist that the unvaccinated person go to a facility for a test rather than the rapid test at home? I'm wondering if we're throwing a little additional chaos into the system that doesn't need to be there. You know, the health officials in the province and health officials across Canada are saying that the testing is not necessary, so for vaccinated, the testing is not necessary. I just, I guess I'm playing the devil's advocate and saying if you are unvaccinated and you have to go to a special place to get tested, are you being treated significantly differently and differently without cause than your coworker who's doing a test at home for free?
Counselor Teason?
Yeah, thanks very much. I'm glad I got on the queue on this one. That was a great question, Counselor Blackmore, because it's my opinion that the policy as it stands sort of does create that extra standard as it is, that we've seen been pushed back on us. One thing that I will say, and this is to back the public health mandates, but as somebody who's tested frequently, I know that in the early days of testing, my test results weren't allowable in any restaurant or workplace environment unless it was observed by a third party, you know, someone administering the test and doing the test for you and stuff like that so that they know that it's getting done right and that you're not just doing it yourself. So I do see, like, based off of our legal opinion, the different requirements, but I don't think it's unreasonable to say that somebody who's vaccinated and has to do a rapid antigen test at home on their own is a big contravention or a big disparity between somebody who's unvaccinated and has to go to an official place with an official test with an official witness to be there for it. So I do think they're both appropriate. I can see your points. I think they're valid, very much so, but I think this is a decent compromise.
Counselor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My concern on this is that a person that is unvaccinated needs to buy the regulations to be properly tested by a qualified person. A person that's vaccinated who feels, say, they got a sniffle, they got a cold, and so they take it, and it's on them to whether or not they disclose or whatever. But if they get a positive, I know people say, okay, I got it, and they isolate immediately and there's no questions asked. So I think it's, it's still, I like where Counselor Bressi is going with this, is that at least have the tests free, the other ones have to be observed and monitored by proper staff. So I think it's a good idea. I support Counselor Bressi's motion.
All right, I see no one else in the queue. If you'd like to close, Counselor Bressi?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Just to address what Counselor Blackmore said, Madam Mayor, is I think that it definitely does create some complexity, but it also mirrors the provincial complexity that we have in programs right now. I think it makes sense to, I think it makes sense to take our lead from medical experts, and medical experts are presumably the guiding provincial response. And so from a medical standpoint, I think it makes sense to follow those experts. And my understanding of the legal landscape is legally, our best protection is to take reasonable steps to follow the lead of experts. And our restriction exemption program that we have here in Alberta is exactly this. If you want to get into a place where there's crowds and potential of transmission and you're unvaccinated, so the science shows that you've got more chance of having COVID and passing on if you have it, well, then you need to take a test that is verified that you took it and submitted by a professional so that we know that it was properly done. But if you are vaccinated so that the science shows there's less risk of you having and passing on COVID, then there are, you're not forced to do it, but there are at-home options that you're encouraged to voluntarily take. And I just think it makes sense to treat our workforce the same, to mirror what we see the provincial health experts doing with their folks. And my understanding of the at-home rapid tests is one of the reasons why the province is trying to make them available to everybody is so that people can't just use them, don't just use them when they want to use them in recreational settings, but also use them in work settings. So I think this is just us going a little bit above and beyond and hoping that all provincial policies are available to our employees. So I would encourage council to support this.
All right, that is Counselor Bressi's close. I just wanted to verify, Counselor Bressi, you're fine with the motion as it is worded? Because at one point, we talked about not.
Oh, thank you for the catch. Yeah, I'd prefer it to read, just stop at rapid tests for city employees and not have the report back to the appropriate standing committee. Again, just, I'm fine with it coming to standing committee. I just want to give administration maximum flexibility in how they deal with this when I don't know what they're going to find in its rapidly evolving situation.
All right, I'll call the question on the motion.
Counselor Berg in favor?
And that is carried eight to one. All right, I'll just double check before I call the meeting adjourned. Any further business? Seeing no business arising, I call the meeting adjourned and enjoy your day. Thank you.